We call the Parkland zoning board review meeting to order if we could sting from only a silent meditation. Slit the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right, so we're here tonight for a petition for a special use permit filed by the Hope Valley Grange with mailing address of 1,116 Main Street, Hope Valley, Rhode Island, 02832, for property owned and located at the same location. And it's identified as assessors plat 28 lot 145. It's in RFR 80 zone filed in accordance with section 8c and 10 of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Parkland as amended. Okay, so we, last month, we had a little confusion as to notifying the town of Richmond and how to do it. We apologize if we sent you in the wrong direction, but...
Why we didn't have to do that?
Well, no, 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 we did. We sent them in the right direction now, but that's something since I've been sitting and realized that we have a...
You have it done.
I don't think we have a habit on it.
I made him go where I should.
Um, so, things changed as far as we see, but I think, I think we're doing, doing it correctly. Maybe in the past, we didn't do it right.
It could have been us. We have hope you asked for another, something else down there.
Yeah, it took me aback too. I mean, Tiana, Tiana reminded me of my facial expression after the meeting because I wasn't too thrilled about what it is, but it's, our attorney is correct. Um, so I assume that was sent in? Tiana has, okay, we have the card now. So I, I believe last month, um, we were just about ready to rehash the findings of fact. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on behalf of anything? Because we, we didn't close the hearing. Any more discussion? Any neighbors opposing? Four? No one here, there's no one, no one here opposing? So if we could just, let's just review the finding of fact so we can get them back on the record for tonight and then we can deliberate if we need to and make a decision. Okay? All right, Joe, you got something you want to throw out?
Current capacity of building is 125 people upstairs and 75 people downstairs. It's over 200. And the schools about, the preschools now occupy about 20 kids with about five staff each day of the week on alternate schedules.
Yep.
Plenty of capacity?
Plenty of capacity.
Septic system was upgraded?
Yep, they had a pretty new septic. They're on town water.
Pumpkin is more than that quick.
Yep, they've got a ton of parking. The accessibility for the parking is much better than what they were at. It's handicap accessible.
Yeah. The, uh, the building is pretty much all up the fire code at this point?
I mean?
The building is pretty much all up the fire code at this point. You got your feet out there.
Now we're in the process of fire proofing the ceiling, which he's, he's involved with in state fire marshal. So yeah, so he'll be inspected and sure we'll get...
Perfect, just about finished. Okay, um, but anything else? I think that's quite a bit. That's all, all in the positive. All right. Ready to go. So those, so those would be our findings of fact. Could we, um, could we put that forward as a motion just to? You don't have to regurgitate them all. Just state those as finding. Give us a second if somebody would like to. I'll do it. Can we entertain those findings of fact that Joe just presented? For the record. So Joe's got, Joe's got a motion on the floor. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. All right, now I get to read the rest of the night too. So, based on the finding, those findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the neighboring use and will not adversely affect the surrounding neighbor's use and enjoyment of their property due to the type and use of structure. Type and use of the facility. So that's, that's a motion?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be environmentally compatible with the neighboring properties and the protection of property use. Sorry, protection of the property value as it, as it pertains to this property would better serve the community.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the orderly growth and development of the town. Will not be environmentally detrimental therewith.
Second.
Second, any discussion?
I'd just like to add that it's a good use for an existing building and, you know, bringing up the fire code. It's a win-win.
It's terrific. I agree.
Yeah, with the order we grow, along those lines.
Yes, not, it's terrific, terrific use. I think it's better for the whole community and the kids. Great location. Too bad it wasn't thought of a long time ago. So that was, so we had a motion.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. I move, based on the findings of fact, the zoning board finds that the proposed special use serves the purpose of this ordinance and the comprehensive plan for the reasons previously stated.
Second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Based on the findings of fact, I move that the zoning board finds that the proposed use will be compatible with the best practices and procedures to minimize the possibility of any adverse effects on neighboring properties, the town, and the environment, all which includes consideration of soil erosion, water supply protection, septic disposal, wetland protection, traffic limitation, safety, and circulation.
Second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Based on previously stated findings of fact, the testimony heard and documents received, the board moves that the applicant has determined, I'm sorry, demonstrated to the satisfaction of the board for review by legal competent evidence that the proposed use more closely adheres to the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Lastly, I move that the zoning board finds that based on the previous findings of fact that we approve this special use permit.
Second.
Second, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're all set. Thank you for your patience.
You all made it pretty much painless.
Good luck. Well, pretty much. Okay. We'll stop by later, but, but good luck with everything, guys. Take it easy, Joe.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, somebody want to let?
Well, we have Courtney Cahill. Is she outside?
She didn't.
Is it Ted's out there?
I know Ted's out there.
Sherman's home tonight?
Yeah, I know Sherman's out there waiting. I don't know if Cahill's out there.
I don't know what he's doing, but I know he's, he wants, he's got a... Oh, no, I never got anything done. Never heard problems. I gave you, gave her a couple of names.
And Sherman doesn't hurt him or anything?
She must still be having a hard time getting a hold of him.
Want to get Ted?
Well, um, so, hang on, so let's read this one on the record and then we'll move it to next month if you guys would like.
Can we discuss that?
I'm sorry.
Can we discuss that?
We can discuss that. So petition two is a petition for a dimensional variance filed by Courtney Cahill on behalf of herself with mailing address of 21 Yells Lane, Lot 4, Rhode Island, 02873 for property owned by Courtney Cahill and Jermaine Gurr, located at the same location and identified as assessors plat 16, Lot 11, RFR 80 zone and filed in accordance with section nine of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Parkland as amended. It doesn't appear that the applicant is present tonight. We moved this maybe what, twice? So I don't know how the board would like to proceed. We can have some discussion. If we'd like to kick it or have her reapply, it's kind of the same.
Well, in fairness to her, as far as a witness would go, turning a biologist and if they came to the ground, it's pretty hard to delineate the well, so certainly, you know, some wiggle room there.
Yeah. Okay.
Other than that, that's my take. The answer's coming, but...
She's asking for a considerable amount of relief. I know that we haven't heard any objections that I've seen, but for us to continue, you know, keep continuing for a full hearing, I just think we have an obligation to the surrounding, surrounding, or the abutting property owners to renotice them. It gets carried on for too long. The, the, the parameters of what's required of the applicant are very clear. She wasn't prepared for the initial hearing. I have no problem giving somebody an opportunity to cure a defect in their application, but now we've carried it twice. There's nobody here to press the application. I think it should be denied.
Pretty valid reason. I mean, re, or, um, re-notifying.
Denied then and then couldn't come back for a year or reapply?
I, I have no objection to her reapplying when she's ready to.
Yeah, I don't want, I don't want to deny it because that'll, that'll create a problem.
Or, or do we do it without prejudice, something?
Yeah.
Something makes it so they can't come back to us for a year. I just want to make sure that doesn't...
Yeah, I think in the past, we've dismissed without prejudice. Maybe if Pear is listening, maybe he can advise us on that.
Um, I think that's one opportunity, I think that's one avenue, excuse me, you can take is to dismiss it without prejudice. What I would suggest is kicking it out maybe one more month. And if there's no action by that time, then I would, I would suggest, yeah, dismissing it in some fashion, whether it be without prejudice or, or otherwise. I just, I, I think, I understand your conversation. You're trying, she's trying to get an engineer on, on board and that, you know?
Biologist, yeah?
A biologist, I'm sorry. And that may be a time-consuming process, but, you know, the benefit of the doubt. Give it one more month and, uh, you know, I, I think that's fair and then, and you can take steps to move it off the docket.
Would it, would it be beyond us to ask her to resubmit, um, letters to her neighbors?
I think if she's going to have to re, if she's, if it's dismissed either with prejudice or without prejudice, she will have to reapply and she will have to go through the formalities again because the abutters need notice. Otherwise, they won't know when to show up.
Now, well, no, what I'm getting at is if we, if we extend it to next month, could we ask her to send notice to the neighbors again? We have, she has the time to do it?
No, I, I don't think we can really do that and the reason, the reason I say that is because, you know, the notice has already gone out and to the extent that any objectors were going to show up, they would be here because they would have had notice from the prior hearings.
Correct.
So, I mean, the fact that we're addressing it on the record tonight indicates that notice, you know, had gone out because we continued it from the last hearing and then from the hearing prior to that. So there is a chain. There is, um, you know, there, it's, it's, you know, all the due notice that's, all the notice that's due has been given. So I, I think it would be, um, I, I think we could probably avoid having to make her, you know, renotice everybody. I think that would be redundant.
What notice were they given that it was continued?
The, the very fact that we had a hearing last month and we voted to continue it. Right?
Yeah, well, then, yeah, I, I think what Pear's getting at is the neighbors have...
I know what Pear's doing, yeah.
Do you, okay, they have to do their diligence and follow.
I understand.
Right?
So is the applicant.
Still put it on the record though. I mean, I, I know you understand. I got to get it out and open air. It's on the record then.
The abutters get a notice for each hearing it's moved?
No.
No, but i, if the abutters wanted to come and they wanted to object, they would have come the first time. And, you know, upon the continuance, they would have come the second time because we do continue it to a date certain each time. So that notice is out there. And there's actually, the Supreme Court has held in a case years ago that, that's the, that's the notice that, that's all the notice that's due. You can't complain of no notice when there was actually a hearing and it was continued to another hearing, you know, another hearing date certain at the prior hearing and you just didn't, you know, you didn't show up to the first hearing to find out. So, um, I'm, I'm, I think it would be, I don't know that we have the power to require her to submit additional notice anyway. So I, I think it's, I think it's safe to, to rest on, on the, the notice of the hearing that was given, uh, that would be given tonight as well as the hearing, or notice that was given in the prior hearings.
Okay. Any more, any more discussion? Chip, right?
Yeah.
Okay, hi Chip, I'm John.
Uh, my main question, when I, when I read through this, I saw that it sounded like she was struggling to have a good biologist.
Correct.
Uh, I was just curious, like, how long does it normally take for that to, you know, get that? I just paid to say something, say notice someone for the unusual circumstances of this year. So she's, you know, it only takes two months for that?
Yeah.
I think it would be fair if her, you know, I mean, something along those lines.
I wanted to start November. But, so, so like if you follow the trail of this, Chip, um, I think initially she didn't realize that she, she needed the biologist left. Um, she was trying to get a waiver on it maybe. I don't remember if there was a waiver, but I think she was trying to get a waiver. She's very close when check on with the house. Um, so it only seems right to get a biologist left. Um, so then she went back into December now and trying to get a biologist through the holidays. And again, you know, obviously we're all in the COVID stuff, so she's, she's trying to get one. And she was having a hard time locating one that wouldn't come out for months. And then we, yeah, something crazy and, um... Yeah, yeah, she got some alternative ones that were more local and I don't think we've... So that's...
I mean, it is her responsibility, but it's...
If you only had any, if you had just a bunch of samples, opportunity, you could provide it.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm...
Make sure they're not like...
No, we, no, we, this board gives the people 10 times more than some of the other boards in my town.
I mean, I think it's a valid discussion because some of these things go on endlessly, um, or near endlessly. We, like Ronnie said, we give people a lot of, a lot of leeway. I mean, we don't want to, we don't want to put anybody else in certain, we don't want to put the neighbors out or the half. But we're kind of getting near time where she's, she's got at least the knowledge of what's going on. And I think last month to this month, we really don't know where she's at.
We didn't hear from her last month.
On Friday.
Oh, you didn't?
Yeah, because she was going to be, because last month was canceled to be rescheduled a week later. And she said that she couldn't get a biologist out for a couple of weeks. And so I told her, Mark A. Tate was the representative based with this one. And I called them last week and I left her case and opened, hey, this is, we need anyone, Mark A. Tate, who can't get the biologist, but her told me what to do.
And you didn't hear from them.
Quite honestly, it was thrown around for three weeks. And again, you're not going to do a well laid away with that. I'm not trying to defend her, but I would certainly make a motion that based on solicitor's recommendation to continue it for a month, give her one more crack at it based on what she has and, uh, and go from there. Nothing, what do we have to lose?
Nothing. No, no one's approached this board or the town right now opposing them. It just didn't. And actually, as a discussion we've had with her, she was very friendly with all the neighbors. Um, so I'd be surprised if there's a problem out there, but you never know.
No, you never know. Quite honestly, as far as the option for her, it's the, the worst case scenario is that she probably gets 10 certified mailings she's got to send out. Everything else is all being equal or whatever the fee is, a hundred bucks, whatever. I don't, I respect use on that, but, you know, not talking a lot of money. And Dan's right. I mean, it's been, we're kind of kicking this can down the road yet.
But I, I don't, I don't think it's for any, any unreasonable reasons why it's being prolonged. I, I would like for her to communicate with us a little better.
I'm just going to second Danny's motion. We'll give her one more month.
Okay.
We don't have an answer next month. She does have Danny. Yeah, Danny. Rudy brings up some good points about the coverage of the lot, so we're definitely going to have to discuss that.
Right, that, that, yeah, that's, that's the appropriate time of the hearing.
Right.
Um, but I, um, would you like to have any more discussion on the motion? You have a second? Throw a vote out there, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? opposed?
Yes.
Reposed? Aye. Okay. All right, so we're going to extend her to next month. We'll set a date at the end of this meeting, okay?
Um, that's another issue.
Yeah, no, we'll discuss that and then we can give the date at the end of the meeting before we... Okay?
Should we present?
Yeah.
Yeah, is this the entire application?
What if he's doing everything right?
We haven't had anything.
Can I have a copy of that?
Is it, is? Okay. Is this looking on my list?
Thank you.
All applicants?
As far as I can tell. Right, well, Joe and I, Joe and I will put hand sanitizer and wipes on these. They share a meeting?
1800.
1800, what are you throwing out there, Marcus? Right over my head, I'm sure.
It went by me. How far? Last trimester.
Don't name them, Dan. We have too many. Don't hurry. Joe's a good name. Okay, did you guys decide? You don't have to tell us when you decided. Thanks. Yeah, I'm still trying. Graham, that's a good name.
Graham Bell.
Yeah, right.
I like Sam.
That's Ian on the mind, brother Sam, isn't it, Graham?
Yeah.
Graham, Graham Collins, too.
Yeah. Grab your ID, all of us, just...
Okay, so now we're going to move on to petition three. Determining completeness of application, consider waivers. Petition for special payment filed by Ivan and Delieta Sherman. The mailing address of 163 Canal Street, Westley, Rhode Island, 02891 on behalf of themselves for property ownership with 165 Ashway Road, Ragged Island, 02808. Identified as assessors plat 23, Lot 4, it's in an RFR 80 zone and filed in accordance with sections 8c and 10 of chapter 134 of the zoning ordinance of the town of Parkland as amended. Okay, all right, so we have our pre-app. Hi Ted, long time no see. I think, you know, I think you know the routine. We're going to read through our, our checklist, make sure everything's here and see if we'll be set for a hearing for next month. Joe, you want to be honest? Checklist item A is three copies of a site prepared by and signed and stamped by a professional engineer with professional land surveying surveyors at a scale of no less than one inch plus 40 feet clear of form.
It's not stamped, but it's there to go. Same one from last time.
Yeah, so this one's dated, um, July 5th, 2017. We know from past applications that things have moved and been taken down and...
You got to revision date way the bottom.
Does it have, all right, okay. All right, then it's been updated. That's what I'm trying to get about. All right, good. Is there another copy? Your plans for the package now?
Any reason why it's not stamped that?
I thought Mike got one named it.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, probably just the next meeting, just bring one of the stamp on it. It's got to be wet stamped, so he can stamp it for your sign. Yep. It's made for this, I don't know if it's a motion that's, they are just...
I'm not done. Oh, he's got more to it today. Hold that motion. Name and address of property owners?
Yes.
Date, north arrow, graphic scale, lot dimensions and area?
Yes.
Flat and lot, zoning districts and setbacks? Existing and proposed structures and their relationships and distances from lot boundary line? Two of your proposed structures, Ted?
Yes. Yeah, he doesn't have it in boundary, but he has it for the second...
Existing and proposed parking areas and sidewalks, nothing changing there, right then? Existing and proposed landscaping as it relates to the request? Existing streets, 911 address, Wells, septic system? List of names and addresses of property owners within 200 feet of the subject property? We got a map, we got a list. All right, we'll get to that in the next one. We got it. It looks like it's the last item. Any peculiar site conditions or features? It's a narrow lot, it's still a narrow lot. Yep, haven't changed. So, would someone entertain a motion that checklist item A is complete with the exception of we need stamped by the engineer for the hearing?
Double.
Second, any discussion on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Reposed? All right, checklist item B is three copies of a separate map indicating all property owners within 200 feet of the subject property and/or all those property owners and entities which require notice from the section 45, 24, 53 of the... Read through the list of, if somebody would like to? I'll read through this, don't mind, I'm the first thing to talk. All right, you guys got your map, we'll check these.
Yep.
All right, so the first one is map 23, Lot 3. It's, yep, Westlawa, with Drudzowski, sorry if I hurt anyone with that. Um, second, yes, I heard. Um, map 23, Lot 6 is William Fornia. Well, map 23, Lot, is it 1 or 100? 100, Parkland Land Trust?
Yep.
Map 23, Lot 112, Pamela Beal. Yep. That's it. Um, map 23, Lot 115, Aaron Sheng. We have, um, map 23, Lot 4, it's Ed Sherman, so that's the subject, I think.
Yeah, it was.
Um, map twenty-three lot three A, Raymond Mazinski. Map twenty-three lot one oh nine, Dennis and Jean Pelletier. At twenty-three lot one thirteen is John Margaret Kerr. At twenty-three lot one sixteen, David Strong. At twenty-three lot five, Corinne and Ron Lees. As a silent E on the end, just for the record. Um, map twenty-three lot three B, Jonathan Lipman. Map twenty-three lot one eleven, Carolyn Andrea Rhodes. Map twenty-three one fourteen, Janelle and Herbert Sadie. At twenty-three lot one nineteen, William J. Bridge Living Trust.
One nineteen?
One nineteen. Catch them all? Hey, that looks good. Make a motion to checklist item B is complete. Second, any discussion?
Aye.
Aye. Item C is soil erosion and stormwater control plan with supporting calculations based on standards approved by the USDA Soil Conservation Service. He's got a label request on that. If anybody taking a motion to wave checklist item C? Would you like to have any discussion on that?
I'd make a motion to waive it. Couple greenhouses.
No, I think we know that lot pretty well.
Yes. It's got drainage problems, it's not up there.
Right, there's no one near them. I would be a second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Alright, checklist item D is a letter from a biologist indicating that there are no freshwater wetlands on or in proximity the sites such that application is regulated by R I Freshwater Wetlands Act. The waiver request for that also. If anyone entertain on motions for waiver request on the biologist. You got a motion for waiver on a biologist? What?
Yeah, yeah, back up, yes.
Yep. Maybe he made a motion, no second, alright, Danny, second. Any discussion on biologist level? All good? Okay. So, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, all good. Item D is location of existing subject system where the requires approval by R I D B M. There's a waiver request also for that.
The greenhouse, people posted it, but there's no bearing on that piece, this proposal, no bearing on that. I think a motion to prove that waiver.
Okay, sorry, any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes. Next is item F, a traffic study addressing the potential impacts of the productivity. Again, there's a waiver request for that. Second. Any discussion?
Why?
All in favor?
Why, I said.
Why, I'm sorry.
Why, why we even requirement for traffic?
For traffic study?
Um, do we have anything on any of the prior files? Any of the prior applications, was it ever done?
No, it was never done. No, we never requested it. I think all the other ones, we waived it. Um, I think the thought process was if there was no the way that the proposal was laid out, there was no increase in volume of people. More, everything that's been proposed is for uh, you know, for planting and there's a barn in the back.
This is a retail center right here, right?
Right, that was already pre-existing.
True.
Yeah.
But anything to do that is expanding this operation.
Correct.
Correct?
Yeah.
So at some point, you have to expect that you're gonna see either more people through here or more people through there.
Why do you? You think he's gonna have more vehicle traffic because of the greenhouse?
Can we ask her? Do you anticipate this improvement to your property to generate more traffic with your customers, whoever comes to the retail center? Or is this helping to alleviate some issues you're having on the site for expansion, you know, for a purchase?
Well, it's been for growth, to keep up the stuff. So why basically?
So it's not?
Would you expect?
No, it's not even for people. The stuff supplied below is not moving the house below, we can grow frame, house can best achieve over other than there, so it's only the pressure of growing.
Any of the, any of the materials that you supply or that you grow on the site? Is any of it so wholesale or all of their retail?
All of it.
Is it all sold onsite or any go offsite retail? Alright.
Chip, go ahead, that's my.
So this is not increased retail space.
No.
Additional place to grow stuff.
Yeah, people getting, get there, there's stuff and stuff, it's all.
So with the, with the numbers, that's a good question. With the number of houses that are there, the greenhouses, how how many do the customers physically go?
Um, they can go in two.
They go in the closest two, okay, because I know you have the ones in the back, those are more for the important. Okay.
You don't seem going in.
Yeah, I think I remember that from last.
This, uh.
Yeah.
They're allowed in the first two greenhouses or just under the? Uh, first two greenhouses, actually, they can open up.
Have you had traffic problems out there at all since you've been open?
No. Energy since I remember what's and box saying, you always make people do ninety in that. Something, some old ladies run a lot.
There's no increase in all parking spaces interior to the to the center, right? They're all out front?
Yeah.
Okay, nobody's gonna be parking in the back other than probably employees.
Good question, though, more volume means more. Oh, you know, it's good with more people there.
Yep, good question.
Um, I mean, I'm I'm reluctant, I'm I'm inclined to reluctantly agree to the to the waiver. Um, my only concern and the only reason I ask is that this property is growing. I think it's going for the better. I think the place is better now than when we put it. Um, I support that, and I think maybe if anything else were to occur on this property, at some point, we're gonna have to call for that, for that study. This may not be that long, so that's why I would, I would, I would support the waiver.
Well, I would think just, you know, in the future, I think the parking spaces would have to increase. To increase the the volume that it does, it's only got X amount of parking space.
I think your point of that, that's any one given time, if it's dancing.
Right.
Period. Is it more volume?
Right, yeah, no, I mean.
Potentially, is there a chance, you know, for Pete Dowder or something?
It would, I probably would agree with Dana as well, if it does expand more. We're probably definitely gonna be a traffic study. That's what I read.
Yeah, precisely.
I don't disagree with my mom.
I don't know many motions. For all.
You remember? Wait, yeah, we had a motion, I believe, I believe we had a second.
So you guys don't know, the house you made me take down? There's not, there's one house, not even a quarter of that house. I was already digging with the big house that had to come down that month, it's like three months.
Yeah, well, we could talk about that next month.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Um. So we, so we have the discussion on the table, your motion, your second. You good now, Dan?
I'm good.
Oh, thank you for that. Alright, so all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Any opposed? I, no one opposed. They, um. I think you're wrong. G? Hmm. So checklist item G is a separate site plan indicating existing proposed topography. He's got it all over the back. Um. How do you feel about what he's got on that?
The the topography limit to where they had drainage issues going back a few years ago, but by and large, he's actually gonna site build a property for prior application. Very flat, and I don't think it had any bearing on this application. And what he provided is the business.
That being said, would, um, somebody make a motion?
And make a motion to accept the site plan.
Site plan with a topography as submitted.
With the same condition? Could I, could I add to that motion that with the same condition that this be stamped and signed? That's what you did with with requirement A.
I'll second that.
That would be amendment for the motion.
Correct.
So, we go on the amendment.
Correct.
Any discussion on the amendment? Would you like to go on the amendment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, so. We had. No, that's why he's, he's not wrong. He's, he's got his fire for the national sportsmen's board background, so, um.
He wants to vote just to make sure.
Yep, so, not a motion. Now we're the the main moment, the original moment. So, um, so we had the original motion on the floor, it's not amended, we've accepted the amendment, so now we're gonna vote on the original, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. It did, I'm not sure. No, that's, that's the right way to do it. Last item on the list? One item H. I believe there's a waiver request on that also. Right, evidence of the proposed water supply is sufficient?
Well. I assume it's sufficiently, you want people to put more greenhouses up? I assume the water supply is sufficient. Motion to grab the waiver.
Any discussion? Any amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion? Alright, we have a final motion on the whole checklist with a couple of conditions, you remember? I make a motion that the checklist is complete with the exception of engineer stamp for print, restating the ID of state. Sounds good. So, is motion, we have a second, any discussion? No amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, should be all set, um. Yeah, if you can get that that stamped and submitted, and then we gotta get the certified letters out again, notifying the neighbors. Alright, and then, um, so next month's meeting, guys. Record, I cannot be here.
Yep.
Fifteen? That, um. Yeah, the fifteenth is the regular. We'd like to push it to the twenty-second. Um. Okay. Yeah, that'd be the fourth Thursday, um, and then we also have the Revedi hearing. Dan Brody can't sit. Dan Harrington wouldn't be here if we did on the fifteenth, so we could either do that on the twenty-second. Um, or we'd have to come up with something else. Was.
Oh, that would be good.
Or, yeah, that would be fine. So I think we'd be fine doing both at the same time. Right?
At least get a start. At least a big game after that. You know, if you wanna do a separate major for that.
Yeah, we can get him started if you have to continue.
Yeah.
Would the twenty-second work for you?
Right.
Dan? Joe? Tony? Twenty-second good with you?
Yeah.
About your team, Chip? Yeah, seven, twenty-second of April? That'd be everything again. Yeah, we're gonna reschedule the fifteenth, well, we're trying to work it out, because there's other forces in play that are not here tonight. Um, Pear, does that work for you? He's still there?
Twenty-second is fine for me for the regular zoning board hearing, yeah.
In person?
Uh, I can, I should be able to be there in person, yeah.
We miss your face.
I miss you guys, too.
They are, can you, um, work out with Tiana notifying Revedi?
Oh, you're gonna kick Revedi to the twenty-second as well?
We have to.
Okay, I will, uh, I will update, I will reach out to them tomorrow and let them know.
Yep.
Tell us.
I'll feel them out, figure out what.
Tell us.
He's not gonna, he's not gonna comment, okay?
Harry, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
No, nothing, just a little, uh, sorry. It's all good. So, um, I would say, let's schedule a regular zoning meeting for the twenty-second.
At what time?
Seven o'clock, we're not gonna do sixes. It's already today, oh, are you gonna leave the earth or something? Yes. No, we're gonna start zoning at seven, um, and we'll do, we'll put the Board of Appeals on after.
Is that possible, Pear?
Uh, yeah, you can do it, you have to, you have to notice that it's a separate meeting, but you can do it, um.
I was wondering if they had to have the full seven.
They didn't have to have what we get.
No, no. They, like Ronnie said, we can get them started, and if they, if we we get through what we get through. If we get through it all, good, if not, then we we continue, so.
Plus, we'll have a field, what they're gonna need for time, and, uh, think they need it all by themselves, we've scheduled them separately.
So you could work out the notice maybe with Pear, um, because it, you know, it gets a little confusing with the joint meeting, but we're gonna hold the zoning first and stuff. Um, and then we'll hear Ted, and then when we get done with that, we're gonna roll, we'll adjourn, move in.
We have to do two separate events.
Right.
So I'll have to be there.
The, the, ah, work of that, I would pair on the time. I mean, I would say, I would say by eight.
Immediately.
Yeah, that's. You put her at, you making me? Work it out with Pear, though, because I mean, it could, that, the agenda for the Board of Appeals could say seven immediately following the zoning board. Again, right? He can, he can give you the specifics.
Right, my, my, my question is, um, for next month, is Sherman the only one on?
So far, yes.
Okay.
Can we just continue or no?
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry, Cahill as well, okay. I will, I'll send an email out to Maggie and to, uh, Revedi tomorrow and figure out what's going on.
Why don't we kick Cahill's out another month? Sam, we didn't hear anything.
I think we already, well.
We can go back and do it.
Well, it, I mean, the, the effects can be the same if, you know, we go to next month, it's gonna take five minutes to kick it out another month anyway.
Yeah, but if she came, we'd have to have to hear it, right?
Yeah.
So if we take it another month. Time wise, it's gonna not have any meaning anyway, because she's gonna have.
Yeah, that's fine, if you guys wanna go back and kick her out in two months, I, I don't see any problem with that at all. Um, just make sure the minutes reflect that.
You guys are gonna have a problem.
I love it. Um. What's, what's your pleasure, guys? Would you, would you like to move Cahill so that we can meet down the meeting, so we can get the Revedi? Providing the, you wanna show up on the twenty-second? I don't, I mean. I mean, I think Lehman will deal with it as it comes.
We can, we can stop.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna try and get everything on the, the twenty-second of April. And Ted, so Patsy's will be, um, first on the agenda, so we can get through that, and Cahill can be second. We'll kick the, the Revedi and the Board of Appeals, if that works for them.
Yeah, there's nothing saying we're gonna get on the pre-ex.
Now, if we do, then we'll have to, we'll figure that out on the fly, okay? There's nothing saying Revedi's gonna go for the twenty-second. But hey, that's, that's a work in progress, we have to wait for them on, on that one. But I would, I think the regular zoning board meeting, we just, we call through on the twenty-second regardless. Right? Okay, everybody good, Chip, you're good with that today, too, okay? Alright. Um, so, let's, uh, we, we, let's hit the minutes. Make a motion to accept the zoning board review meeting minutes for February twenty-fourth. Okay. Yeah, yeah, Ted, you're. Seven.
If you wanna comment six again.
So that was, that was mainly, so that was last month, that was mainly the, the Grange. It looked, it looked good to me, so, if somebody wants to.
Did you make a motion?
Any discussion? Am I gonna talk about amendments, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. Um, do we have anything else? Board would like to discuss, what was the? Open here? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Don't anyone go in there, so that's the end of that. We have to, we have to convene as the. Board of Appeals and kick, kick them.
You are now.